All right, good morning. Welcome to the Thurston County Board of County Commissioners Agenda Setting.
Turn off your phone.
Work session for Tuesday, February 13th, 2024. It's 9:04 a.m. My name is Time Answer Chair of the Board. To my left is Vice Chair Commissioner Wayne Fornier and Commissioner Gary Edwards. We have Commissioner Emily Claus on Zoom and Commissioner Mahia is excused for this session. For public virtual attendance, you may follow along on the Thurston County YouTube channel. We also have Inram County Manager Robyn Campbell and Assistant County Manager Rob Gelder. And the task today between now and 11 is to review the proposed agenda for next Tuesday's meeting. There is no board meeting this afternoon. We do have a Board of Health meeting, but we will have a board meeting according to our new schedule next Tuesday at 2 p.m., which is February 20th. So let's pull up that agenda. And that meeting will be called to order at 2 p.m. with pledge allegiance to be led by Commissioner Claus, approval of the proposed agenda, and then a presentation related to African American History Month.
Uh, yes, this, um, February, it's the African American History Month. Do we need to ask guests?
Yes, Olympia Mayor Dante Payne.
Mayor for Olympia, you said?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I see Commissioner Mahia has joined us. Welcome. Um, any questions on the proclamation for African American History Month? Okay, opportunity for public to address the board follows with county manager's update. After that, anything we should anticipate, county manager?
Um, you may, I will not be here next week, but Rob will be, uh, taking the lead and he may want to announce the, uh, new county manager who will be joining us in April.
Okay. Any else? Questions? No. Okay, consent items. We have quite a few. A through M. 3A is operating agreement with Thurston Community Media.
Yes, this is a memorandum of understanding with TC Media that allows them to post public access programs on Channel 22. Uh, there is no money involved in this contract. This just gives them permission to use the channel.
To post what on Channel 22?
Um, so public access programming, they still provide that to the community and they're able to post those programs on this channel under the MOU.
Like our meetings or?
Not our meetings. So if, if, sorry, Megan Porter, Public Information Supervisor, if they have a community group that wants to post, uh, a video about candidates or something like that, if legal women voters want to have them post that to the Channel 22, this allows them to continue to do that. So it's all public access. It's not the government channels.
We have to be part of that permission?
Because we hold the franchise agreement with Comcast, it's technically the jurisdictional channels, but this just gives them access, continues to allow them to post to that channel. City of Lacey just entered into this agreement with them. It's the same agreement. Uh, it just, it, they've been posting to it, but this just makes it more official, that they are allowed to continue to do that.
Commissioner Edwards?
How many governmental entities are coordinating that? So it's us, Lacey, others?
So it's the four jurisdictions was the one via Lacey, Tomwater, and Thurston County that have the franchise agreements.
With that same channel?
All of us have the same franchise agreement with Comcast that allows us to post public access to that channel. This is just giving TC Media continued access to keep posting on.
But I mean, we all use the same channel, do we?
That channel for public access. Our governmental channel is Channel 3, which is different. They don't have access to post on that. This just allows them to continue to post public content to Channel 22.
Any other questions on 3A? Okay, 3B is public defense, resolution establishing position 24 R01759.
Board may recall approving a grant, um, for the county to provide, uh, indigent defense, um, to people who are charged with possession or public use of illegal substances. Um, this creates the position that is paid with the grant.
Questions? Okay, sounds like that's straightforward. Uh, 3C is juvenile court probation, resolution reclassifying position.
This reclassification from a juvenile probation counselor one to a juvenile probation counselor two will address workload and create equity between staff who have similar assignments. Uh, at the top of their range, the pay increase is $789 a month. This position is currently vacant. Um, so the amount of actual cost will depend on where they hire within the range and, um, the juvenile court budget is able to absorb any increase. And we've got Ted, uh, on the screen who can answer any questions that you may have.
Not hearing any, not seeing any hands.
I, I'd like to see that that person is very capable on the whole electronic, electronic end of things. Other than that, Ted, no.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ted. Okay, Superior Court is next, resolution extending end date of position.
Yes, this item, uh, is for a position that the county approved that currently has an end date of June 30 of 2024. Um, this position is funded, uh, through the state of Washington. The administrator of the courts provides funding under Blake, uh, for the position and both Kristen and I have talked to, um, Chris Stanley, who is the, uh, chief of finance at, uh, the AOC, and he assures us that the, um, contract will be extended through the end of, um, June of 2025. So we would like to get the position end date extended. I believe that the position is currently vacant, um, which is why we'd like to extend the end date now. So that will, uh, make it easier to hire.
Questions? None. Okay.
All right, good.
Uh, next up is public works. Appointment to the Solid Waste Advisory Committee. Looks like we have three new appointments from three different jurisdictions.
That's correct. Um, EFNG, uh, are all for county commissioners to affirm the appointments from local governments, including the city of Lacey, the Port of Olympia, and the town of Bukota.
These are basically us formally approving, but they're selected by their various councils. Any questions from the board? Jeff, anything we need to know?
Uh, I don't believe so. You are correct. They are recommended by the, either the mayor or the council, um, for this position.
Okay. Then we'll just jump up to, uh, 3H Sheriff Office Item Memorandum Memorandum of Understanding with the U.S. Secret Service.
This item is for the reimbursement for the county for costs incurred by the sheriff's office when they assist the Secret Service with the cyber fraud task force. And you have members of the sheriff's office here to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you for joining us this morning.
Carla Carter, Deputy Chief?
Yes, Deputy Chief.
And?
Detective Kemke.
Kemke, oh, of course. It's been a long time since I seen you. Um, okay, so can you give us a little bit of a background on this?
Yeah, so ultimately it's just, we're asking for permission to enter into an MOU with the Secret Service to put one of our detectives on the cyber fraud task force. And that will offer, open up opportunities for training for him, open up networking opportunities, and also, um, if there's a critical incident, it's just a force multiplier.
Questions? You're good? Good? Good. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, uh, next up is Treasurer's Office. Write-offs of uncollectible personal property taxes for 2023.
This item, uh, is under state law, the Board of County Commissioners, uh, must authorize any write-off of bad debt. Um, under this item, the treasurer is unable to collect, um, property taxes for various reasons, including closed businesses, destroyed property, and bankruptcy. The total amount of the write-off appears to be $10,810.58. So I see Eric on the screen. Good morning. If you have any questions.
It's a pretty low dollar amount considering to the dollars handled by the treasurer, I would guess.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's getting lower. That's a good sign. It, it has been higher in the past.
Any questions for Eric?
I have none.
Okay, looks like good to go. Thanks, Eric. This is a big consent goal, isn't it? J is a treasurer item, sale of tax title, title property via private negotiation to Orin Thompson.
Yes, uh, so this property has been, um, a tax title property to, since 2016. Uh, the property is on Boston Harbor Road and appears, according to assessor reports, to be, uh, unbuildable property with no improvements. I couldn't tell the size of the property. Eric, do you know how big that parcel is?
Yeah, it is point zero seven acres. And I know it's in an area, according to, uh, information from the assessors, that, um, it, it cannot get sewer or water either. I think the gentleman wants to get it, just wants to have something for future in case it ever comes to the ability to build or whatever they plan on doing with it. So I think it's more of an investment than just holding on.
Do you understand him? I think he said point zero seven acres.
Yeah, it's a very, very small piece of property and, and it cannot get sewer or water. Um, so the purchase price is $3,069.50. Um, and there is a map attached, uh, in the system. If you'd like to have that, we could print it out for next week.
Commissioner Mahia?
Thank you. Um, I've met with, uh, Boston Harbor constituents, a, a big group of them, last week, and, um, there were concerns about the selling of this property just because they are having a lot of issues with people purchasing these kind of properties and then having like encampments or RVs or just a lot of activities and having to go through the code compliance. It's been a struggle for many of them. Um, and so there's just a lot of concern about, you know, what, that this is going to become another version of that. So I, I'm just, the board might hear, uh, from my constituents, uh, on this, uh, sell of the property, uh, because they were, they had a, just a lot of concerns.
Commissioner, a quick question for you. Did, were those concerns for other private properties that people were buying?
Um, well, actually, well, they came in and, uh, they had all the tax title properties lined, lined up already. So I know that they are looking at kind of what their options are as well, just because they're saying, um, I think it happened with a previous property that was a tax title and, and, um, and then it's just become, it's grown into, into something that, you know, I guess none of the, uh, people that live there kind of expected and, and, you know, it was unbuildable. So there was never anything built on it, but, uh, people just proceeded to kind of have like.
I guess I'd like to see a map of what the issue is. I couldn't, I couldn't hear everything or make out everything that both parties said on this. It's a little scratchy for me. I don't know. Like an echo in there.
Yeah.
Did I cut off?
Yes.
Uh, yeah.
I apologize.
We heard both of your audios are a little bit like, uh, muffled, I would say, or so, but we can hear you. It's just not, it takes a little concentration. So I, I caught what you were saying. I guess I'm just curious why, I mean, point zero seven is really small.
It's like a pickleball court.
Like, um, I live on a point one seven, and if I imagine a third of that, I couldn't even.
It's like a fun thing, huh?
Yes, you couldn't put a home on it. That's not even, it's not a.
Right.
So, I mean, you could put an RV, I guess, but how is it, I guess I'm wondering why it's different. Sitting there right now, someone could stick an RV on it and the county would have to do compliance, or somebody owns it and someone could put an RV on it and then county have to do compliance. Like, what is it? How does the fact that somebody's now purchased it change the risk of a, a legal activity or a, I mean, a little bit, but I guess.
You think it's privately owned, it's easier to enforce because if it's publicly owned, you gotta have housing for the people that take up residence there. But it apparently doesn't always play out that way.
But it would be good to see, is this super close to Boston Harbor, like the, the residential community? Is this like nestled in a bunch of homes or, I, I don't, I haven't had a chance to look at the map.
So we can get a printout of the map to you. There's one attached to the AIS and.
If I remember right, that development's over a hundred years old. So it's probably got.
It appears to be right on Boston Harbor Road.
Uh, Commissioner Mahia, do you, do you, um, remember you said the community members had sort of all the tax title parcels? Were they, was there anything specific about this one or was it kind of a generalized worry about all different tax title sales that we might engage in? Or was there a particular thing about this particular one?
They were, it was a variety of issues. Um, it was the kind of, could they be used, um, for other purposes to expand parks or could it be used for expansion of the wastewater, which, uh, Jennifer did, you know, was there with me and she did say that there were no plans to expand that. Um, but it, then they did bring forward these concerns. So, um.
So the, the, I will clarify that the county, if, if the residents of Boston Harbor would like to purchase these properties, they can use them as they see fit within the zoning rules, but, um, the county is unable to use these properties for any purpose. We hold them in trust.
Commissioner, this?
And, and we did let them know that.
This is the, the parcel that you reviewed last week that was adjoining the, uh, the county facility, the sewer treatment facility, and that Jennifer indicated that there would be no need for, uh, public works to utilize that space.
And, and also, so you understand what tax title, I hope everyone can hear me, it's very specific in statute that if it's sold to a municipality, they have to use it for public purposes. So it'd have to be a park or an easement to a, a, whatever it is, or, you know, a sidewalk or something. Um, statutes for tax title, we can't just sell it to a municipality just so they can have it and hold on to it forever. It states it has to be used for, my understanding is, public use. And that might be one of the reasons, too, it's been sitting there and maybe that's why public works isn't interested in it because if they were, they would have bought it when it went to auction. So that's why it's tax title. No one ever bought it when it went to auction. So we're just getting it on, back on the tax rolls and somebody has an interest.
Right, but the county can't just choose to use it. We would, the county would have to purchase the property and then put it to use.
Use it for public purposes.
Right.
Do we know if the purchaser, proposed purchaser is the adjoining property owner or is he just someone coming in from outside?
He's just someone coming in from outside. He, he's been interested in other properties. He's actually very young. He's basically just doing it for him and his wife to understand. It's just to buy something to hold on to. That's my understanding. I mean, I have very short conversations with these people. I just do the research and put it out there and, and go from there. Cause I'd let them know they, they need to do their own research to make sure it's what they want to use the property for. I don't do that because I don't want to give advice or anything to anyone that's interested.
Eric, there, there is a, a similar sized parcel right next to it. Um, is that all? Um, is that also tax title? It's the same size.
I, if I remember right, both properties, uh, adjacent to this are county owned by, I think, Public Works, I believe. That's the only one. It's a little strip right in the middle of the two, if I recall.
Uh, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
I mean, I think there's enough complications here that we ought to at least take it off right now on consent. I mean, I'm gonna opt to have it off of consent to find out a little more about this and see some maps and see a little bit more about what is going on here. I, I commend the treasurer's office for continuing to try and, uh, get, uh, surplus property back on the tax rules, but I don't think this is one to go just move ahead without any review.
Are you saying all of them or just one?
No, just this one.
Just the one?
Commissioner, I.
Yeah.
I agree with that. If we can take it off the consent agenda, please.
Well, either of you have an absolute right to have it off consent agenda. The question I have is, do we need more? Do we want to take it off of any agenda for now because we need more time to figure it out?
I want to have more time. I want more details before I can make a vote on it.
It sounds like you want to remove it from this agenda, period.
Yes.
Not just move it to.
Yeah.
Remove it to the first agenda in March, which I think is on March fifth, would be the next one.
Is there any objection to moving this item to March fifth?
Okay, let's do that.
All right, that allows a little time to.
Can, will we get some information?
Yes, we will make sure you get map and, and, uh.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Just, just so you know, that's all on that original AIS. Um, the map and everything.
Yeah.
Of work specifically located. All right.
It's all attached, Eric. We, we just didn't print it out this morning.
Okay, got it. All right, Robin.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next three items, three K, L and M are voucher lists for the weeks of January twenty-second, twenty-ninth and February fifth.
Yes, I do not believe there are any items on these voucher lists for, um, uh, tenant improvements at the atrium. I will note that, uh, item L, the voucher list is a little over eight million dollars, which seems unusually high. Um, reviewing it, um, there are three areas that add up to over five million dollars. Um, there's about a million dollars in payments to the BHASO. There's three million in payments for housing assistance and social services. And there is one point three million in a payment for waste disposal. So just those three things adds up to, um, five point three million out of the eight. Uh, so when you take those into consideration, the rest of it is pretty much the regular type of payments.
By any chance, was the waste disposal Hazle House? Did we, uh, do a contract?
I couldn't tell if it was specifically Hazle House. We can check and see what that payment is.
Any other questions on the voucher list? Okay, next up is department item four A, equal opportu- sorry, equal employment opportunity plan.
So this item, as you know, uh, DV has been working on the, uh, equal opportu- equal employment opportunity plan, also known as, as the EEOP. Uh, once the county has an EEOP, that will enable us to get, um, certain federal funds, in particular from the Department of Justice. Um, as we develop the EEOP, one of the things that, uh, DV found is that the county currently does not gather or, um, only gathers in paper files, uh, some of the data that the report requires. So we will potentially need to, um, get the assistance of a contractor to help us figure out how to get the necessary data. Um, other than that, the report is ready for your review and approval.
And, and how much money is that gonna cost?
Uh, we haven't figured that part out yet. But we have to have a plan, as you heard from the auditor.
We've been without a plan forever.
Yes, we have.
And, and I can't, I don't know, I can't bring myself to for something without having some idea what it's gonna cost.
The plan itself costs nothing, but to gather the data, that is the concern.
That other issue.
Right.
And if we can't even come close to an estimate, uh, do we wanna approve something?
The cost estimates, do they come later? We're not signing up to pay for anything. We're just.
No, not at this time. What, what you're approving is the EEOP plan. The problem is that we don't have a way to gather some of the required data. Um, and we're gonna have to have some help with that. And DV has not yet gotten an estimate of what that help will cost.
And so you're saying that needs to be included in this or can those be done separate?
Maybe not. If this, if just saying we've got the plan is sufficient to do what the auditor needs, I'm all in favor of that. I'm concerned about signing up for something without knowing. You know, it might be two million dollars like we're faced with. And I, we just don't have it.
We wouldn't be doing that without your approval.
I know that, but still, what would be the limit?
Is there some value to improving this when we don't have the data?
There, there is. DV and I have already loaded, uh, the required portions of the plan, other than certain data elements that we don't have. Um, we have loaded everything that we do have that's required into the federal system and we need the board's approval um, of the plan itself so that we can hit that last button. That will enable, we think that there's enough there that Department of Justice will acknowledge that we are making progress toward a plan. That will release funds in a grant award that the auditor has obtained. She can't get the money until there's a plan approved. So this is a step in being able to get federal funds. It's just that we, we, uh, and DV can tell you, DV can tell you more about it, um, at a later date, but, uh, we, we do know that there are concerns with being able to collect all of the data that's required.
So, okay. This has been going on for a long time and it's stayed at a very high level where it's like, we need this to qualify for a grant. And I've not really delved any deeper into it. So I guess at this point, what I, since I'm being asked to approve it, what I need to know is, is this something like a HUD report where you just, it's just factual? It's not, no one's making a discretionary choice. It's just information and you submit? Or is this like this plan, is this something where we need to scrutinize the plan, the substance, the, the strategies, the, you know, how, how deep do I need to go into assessing whether or not we've adequately come up with a plan that's, uh, appropriate?
DV is on the screen.
I've never seen an EOP. I don't know what's in it. I don't know how long it is. I don't know who had to choose what to put in there and so I, I did.
I'm gonna turn this over to DV.
Thank you. So in this plan, um, and I mean, putting this together, just, I looked at a lot of EOPs from various jurisdictions, just to gather what I think would make sense for us. Um, within this particular plan, there are strategies on how we address the underutilization of some demographics, um, largely associated with specific races that we just don't have within our workforce. Um, so it talks about assessing our recruitment, assessing our internship programs, assessing, um, like training related to ensuring that our interview processes are ethical. Um, and it talks about how we're ensuring that we're doing our best to give access to people to be able to apply for our positions and be well informed about the process. Um, the issue is that this plan is satisfactory in allowing us to receive grants at this time, but it does not cover everything that DOJ requires. So it's the, the portion in there that talks about bringing on a consultant is saying over the next year or two, this is a twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-five plan, we are going to find a way to get the data, historical data that is required to be reported on. So right now you would just be approving the plan as it stands and then any associated costs with bringing on someone, um, is a separate conversation. The issue right now though in collecting the data that's lacking is that no one in the county has actual expertise in overseeing an EEO program. And so it, I, in my opinion, it's in the best interest of the county to bring in someone with that expertise to train up either people in HR or whoever has the capacity to manage this entire program. This information is something that the commissioners should be seeing, um, anyway, because it talks about the makeup of your workforce, but it is something that should DOJ require whenever we receive grants. We, right now, we don't have the full, um, picture of what's required for DOJ. This is just saying we commit to thinking out a way to get that data over the next two years.
How long is the document that you guys have produced or that you?
It is, it's two separate documents. So the plan itself is about eighteen pages. Um, but a good chunk of that is a bunch of charts, um, that kind of outline the makeup of our workforce and the charts come from the second document, which is the utilization report. And that's the report Robin was referencing, that data goes into the DOJ reporting system.
Other questions from the board?
I, I, I don't, I don't know. I'm not crazy about endorsing things. I never get a chance to look at or see. That's, that's my problem. Like a HUD plan, if we submit a fraudulent HUD plan, we're in trouble. So if we submit a plan, but it's not up to speed, saying it is up to speed, then do we have to pay something back because we got?
There is nothing in this plan that says that we have anything that we don't. It, the plan includes a plan to get to what we need.
Plan is the plan.
Plan is a plan.
We have, this is the first review. We have a week to review it.
No one's read it. No one here has read it.
I haven't, I haven't.
So we will get you a copy of that, that out and get that for them. Um, so that you have an opportunity to review it. We, I, I will say that, uh, our office made a commitment to the auditor that this plan would be ready in February and DV has delivered that plan. So thank you very much for all the work that you have done on.
Yeah, I want to get it done if it's, I mean, like, let's take this week. If there's concerns, we'll address them next Tuesday. Um, but maybe it looks great to everybody. We can move on it next week as scheduled. So appreciate the work, DV.
Commissioners, if I can go, if you're done with that item, go back to the voucher list, the, the one point three million. It's, uh, you'll notice on the voucher, it says to the regional disposal company, that is a payment to the parent company of Republic Services for, uh, the, the monthly operating of the transfer station.
Okay, thank you, sir. Um, is that color? Okay, good on four A then, at least for now. We'll revisit this next week.
Thank you, DV.
Four B is interlocal agreement for twenty twenty-four Thurston Climate Mitigation Collaborative Regional Initiatives.
This is a memorandum of understanding with, uh, Lacey Olympia and Tomwater to implement the regional incentives that are part of the regional climate mitigation plan. Uh, these initiatives are the Residential Energy Efficiency and Electricity Campaign and the Home Energy Score Model Ordinance. Rebecca is here. If you have any questions, the county's share of the cost is fourteen thousand eight hundred seventy-five dollars. I believe all the jurisdictions are contributing equally. Um, so.
So.
That is the county's share.
Rebecca, you gave us a, a briefing on this and is there anything, this is just the business item. Is there anything additional to this than what you described in your briefing?
Nothing has changed since the discussion we had on February fifth.
Okay. Any, any questions? Thank you. Thanks for that.
Okay, thanks.
Uh, next is item four, yeah, item four C, uh, resolution of intent to reimburse Thurston County LTGO bonds.
So this is an item that we discussed when bond counsel and bond advisor were here, uh, presenting to you. Uh, this action enables the county to start the clock essentially. I think, uh, on December twenty-second, that all costs incurred on projects related um, to the projects that are going to be paid with the bonds can be reimbursed by the bond proceeds at the time we issue the bonds. So just to make this a little more clear, uh, for example, the ballot processing center, the county intends to issue the bonds to do approximately ten million dollars worth of work on the ballot processing center. Uh, county staff are already doing, um, design work on that project. And we don't intend to issue the bonds until probably around September or October. Uh, if the board approves them at that time. So we are capturing all of the information uh, and costs now associated with the ballot processing center project. And when we issue the bonds, we're currently paying them out of building reserve. The bond proceeds will pay back building reserve and then we'll make the bond payments out of the public safety sales tax fund. So this allows us to capture those costs and repay them.
Question. Is it too late in this discussion to bring up including, uh, those improvements to the, uh, juvenile family courts within the bond funds?
Uh, no, it is not too late to bring that up. We certainly could issue bonds for that purpose. However, the question is, how would we make the bond payments? Because that could not be paid out of the.
That can't come out of public safety sales?
Sales tax, not for the juvenile facility.
Why?
That is not a, um, item that was contemplated in the resolution to authorize the tax.
It just says public safety infrastructure, right?
No, it specifies that the money will be used for law enforcement, public defense and the prosecutor's office and the ballot processing center, the elections center. Those are the only things that.
Isn't it law enforcement, the jail?
The juvenile court, I mean, that's housing those, uh, juvenile offenders is absolutely, in my, I mean, in my opinion, is absolutely law enforcement.
So you may recall.
It's the ultimate end of law enforcement.
Right, but think about the conversation we just had yesterday.
That's what I'm thinking about.
About the use of the funds.
Yeah, but can we, are we gonna be stuck if we don't, if we get a bad ruling, if we decide to go to get attorney general?
We would essentially have to find money to pay back the fund if we use it in a way that's determined inappropriate. And I will say, nobody at any point in time was talking about paying for a juvenile facility.
Well, no, we didn't know about it.
But, but that is the intent, that you set the intent already of how to use that money.
I have to say, I'm, I'm, uh, with Dwayne on this. I think that's law enforcement for sure.
Yeah.
Uh, the jail is law enforcement, the prosecutor is law enforcement. Uh, there kind of, a lot of things go hand in hand, but we didn't know.
Yeah, we didn't anticipate that failure, that system failure.
We don't anticipate a whole lot of things. That doesn't make the money available for it.
Asking if maybe we could put this in that, in the, in, in to be discussed.
Yeah, I'd like to hear what the attorneys have to say about that, that if it's possible or not. How specific was that very broad infrastructure statement?
They're worried about you paying for increases of costs that should qualify.
I know.
As we heard yesterday, you know.
It's a mess.
Well, it wasn't specifically stated that there'd be a headquarters included in there, but the, you know.
That's absolutely true, but those headquarters are to house law enforcement. It specifically talks about.
The jail houses the product of the law enforcement.
I, I, in my opinion, uh, the jail, especially the juvenile facility is a, um, more of a, it, that's more of a break than a stretch.
With all due respect, I'm gonna need more than, than you're concerned.
I, uh, yeah, no, don't just go on what I'm saying.
It seemed way more of a stretch than, than increased cost for the shirt, for the deputies.
I mean, it's all kind of a.
Way more of a stretch.
It's a foggy area out there, but we do need to.
We have a detention sales tax.
We need to figure out a way to deal with it. We need to figure out a way to deal with it. We do have detention sales tax money, but
Yeah, but it's
Actually, that went towards juvenile before it went to the jail.
Yes, absolutely, we could use, if there was any, we've already tapped that fund out. Um so, so what we can do is add that project
I don't want to muddy the water too much more, but what are we gonna do?
But the, in the long run, it it will, before you issue the bonds, we'd have to figure out uh a way to pay for it.
Building reserves would not cover that bond payment, or would it?
Uh it could, it could cover bond payments, we could use our building reserve, but someone's gotta pay into the building reserve. The building reserves doesn't have its own uh revenue stream other than billing other funds.
Unless we had that great, that I am, that Grace Harbor contract wouldn't be for much, I would imagine.
Uh it wouldn't, it would.
But it would be a little bit of revenue.
Yeah, a little bit of money.
Are we gonna hear, I wonder if we're gonna hear good news later?
Judges are willing, so far they have not been. So maybe, maybe someone will be able to convince them, they've agreed to a meeting.
Okay.
But they've not agreed to the program. Well, there is um a few things, one is that it's better for juveniles who are criminally involved to be in their community, because they're gonna come out. You want them to come out, you want them to stop offending, so there's the connection, as you well know.
Yeah, yeah.
Um so there is concern about removing people from their community and having them so far away from their uh family.
Are you talking about why the court, why the court's resistant to the?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, a whole bunch of reasons.
Yeah, they got a lot of reasons.
Oh, I don't agree with all of them, but, you know, like, one of the things is like, you know, their philosophy. They're worried about, you know, if Gray's, they don't want to be told by Gray's Harbor judges to do things that's contrary to their philosophy of how they you know, work, you know, they they've got kids working in the garden instead of, you know, every day, instead of
Breaking rocks.
So instead of sitting in the jail and they're They would have to follow, you know, they would have to have Gray's Harbor, and the Gray's Harbor judges would get to dictate what the term, what the parameters were for the juvenile detention and I that that's one thing, and there's a few things, they, it's a great topic for It's a great, with with new commissioners and this this issue bubbling back up again, this is a great topic for today's, don't we have Superior Court coming in, or is that
So the the judges have agreed to meeting, our judges will meet with their uh presiding administrative presiding judge and their county commissioner. Uh and Taylor is assisting in setting the meeting up, so they're willing to have a conversation. But they have not yet agreed to uh accept the program, so that's in the works. Um back to this. So we can add two million and contemplate that project, but what I'm because this does not bind you to issuing bonds.
Yeah.
So we could certainly add that as possibility, but before you issue the bonds, we have to figure out where the payments come from.
Certainly, let me ask a question on that, I don't, which I I have no idea. Uh when when we talk about issues that are on the capital improvement program, we have something like this that comes up that we had no idea we were gonna be facing. So how does that, are we allowed to move forward and make that fix?
Yes, there there's two reasons you can do that. First is for facilities, we always include an item that's called major maintenance. And the description of that item is if something totally unanticipated comes up that we must address uh before the next CIP cycle. And then the second thing is if it's bigger than that, um then the board has the authority to amend the CIP with a budget amendment, which we have done in the past few years.
But we have to have some money to
We we do have to have some money.
Problem.
So you amend the budget, you amend the CIP.
Is that where we voted that it don't, that that amendment doesn't have to go through the planning commission?
That would no longer need to go through the planning commission.
We have to take that through the planning commission.
So the this two million dollar project, it fits under the major maintenance of unanticipated repairs.
It is so concerning that every building and facility that we have has a major problem. And if, and if they only got one, they're a good building.
Yeah.
But it is, we are in dire straits when it comes to facilities.
We are.
Except for Public Works, I would say Public Works is fantastic.
Uh no, they have in those buildings too. Yeah, you just haven't seen them yet. They're great buildings, we have great buildings, but they all have issues because of delayed maintenance. And I will say that Thurston County is not alone, that is a major problem of governments across the nation.
Yeah.
More so here. This is when, when we're, you know, we start paying, you know, for the sense of our predecessors, basically, right? Like, just the lack of maintenance over the years is now it's coming to the time where either we do it or we're gonna be in trouble and
Yeah, it's a hole we need to
This this juvenile thing, we need to do it, somehow we need to figure it out, or we are
You know, it terms.
We're gonna be exposed to some high liability issues if we don't fix this.
All right, so we will, we will, can we, can we amend the bond? All right, so we'll amend this resolution to include that project as possible uh part of the bond issue. And uh it should be ready for you.
Now, good news for us later today, then maybe we can just use it as a rainy day.
No, you can never take bond money and pay it a rainy day. That triggers arbitrage, exactly.
Love that word.
Good job, I know, it's great work.
So is that, are we done with then, four C?
Nicole looked like she was gonna give a presentation.
She she's here if you need her to chime in.
All right.
Uh as we move forward on this, that would be uh what's the definition on the LTGO again?
Long-term government obligation?
General.
Limited, limited.
Could could that be in the verbiage somewhere so the public could have? I've been told about seven times what that is.
We can spell that out.
But I think it ought to be spelled out for the public.
Yes, we can do that.
The the more common term is like a councilmatic bond, people know it kind of as that.
Is not on this one, I don't think.
This this is the generally used term.
Okay.
And we will spell it out.
Okay, four D.
All right.
Limited tax general obligation.
Consolidated Communications Washington Telecommunications Franchise Agreement Transfer of Control.
All right, uh the Board of County Commissioners must uh approve all franchise agreements. Um and this particular franchise agreements, the Commissioner's Office handles franchise agreements for telecommunications. All other franchises are managed by Public Works, but we do telecommunications. Um so uh we currently have a franchise agreement. And the company is transferring control of the company to a different company. So we have to record that under our franchise agreement and the board has to approve the transfer. Um so this has been reviewed, uh you you may recall that we have um Kenny Feldman. Uh national uh expert attorney in telecommunications rules. Uh he has reviewed this agreement along with um Julie, um yep. Oh, and she's on the screen, there's Julie. Um they have both uh reviewed this agreement and said that it is ready for board approval. And either Julie or Nicole can answer your questions about this side.
Questions for Julie or Nicole?
I don't know if I know enough to ask proper questions.
It's a technical thing.
Yeah, so as Robin had spoken to, so we already have a franchise agreement with Consolidated Communications. Um they're underlying partners, they are changing those people, and so we're obligated to, they are obligated to let you know that that entity is changing. And so can our outside counsel, along with Julie, have reviewed their application and found that they are fit to be able to transfer that control, so they're asking just to pick up the term of the originally um franchise agreement and just move it to a new entity. And the entity's name um is Next Cape. There is a memo attached to this from our outside coun- counsel as well as the proposed resolution.
Julie, this sounds pretty non-controversial, is that accurate?
I agree, and I will say Ken Feldman did the heavy lifting on making sure we had the appropriate information to ensure that this uh new controlling entity uh was qualified. Under the terms of the current franchise, they have to provide information, that information was provided and reviewed by him. And there's no concern on our part, uh it it's going to be the same entity. Actually, the the telecom company is the same, it's just a different funder or controlling entity. So um there shouldn't be much, any change really practically. But it is a process that we're, we require companies to go through if they are um if they hold a franchise agreement with the county.
Questions from any board members?
All right, can we say in the motion on advice at council, we're making this motion to do this? Cause boy, I hate doing stuff that I don't have a complete understanding about.
Ken's memo probably lays it out, we can review that before next week. Um he's usually got a lot of good information for us, so.
And then I have one other question of Robin, and that would be, you said all the other franchise agreements are handled by Public Works, why not this one?
Because we get, the the major franchise agreement is Comcast. And the county gets a significant amount of money that's deposited into the general fund under the telecommunication franchises, so the Commissioner's Office retains control of those.
And is anything gonna change with any of that, is the dollar amount changing?
Nope.
Nothing is changing that's gonna cost us more.
Just the underlying partner of the company, and they have to have our
Doesn't cost anything.
Nope.
It's annually negotiated, and then this one is just, there's an amendment because there's a new secondary.
This one is actually a ten-year agreement.
Okay.
I'm gonna share words. All right, then let's move on.
Thank you.
Five A is Community Planning and Economic Development Ordinance for Ag Code uh amendments, this is what we just reviewed.
Just yesterday, yep, Ashley is here.
We directed that this be put on, and is there anything else we need to know? So everything should be good to go, cause we went through this thoroughly yesterday. Thanks, Ashley. Okay, very good, we're good on five A. Five B, request for qualifications for Habitat Conservation Plan Implementation Support.
So under the um Habitat Conservation Plan that the federal government has approved. The county must not only buy habitat property, but we must maintain that property. Um this is an R, a request for the board to approve an RFQ, that's a request for qualifications for a consultant who will provide technical support in the management um of the HCP land that the county purchases. And the um funding for the contract would come from the mitigation fees that we currently collect when we sell mitigation credits.
Why an, why a consultant and not hire an employee or?
Or why not a staff person?
We, that that is a great question, I don't know if Ashley can answer that. I know that the county uh had discussions about that early on in the HCP. Uh we don't have anyone with that type of expertise on staff, and I think that the
Great to have that.
Well, the policy was, the land management was not necessarily a a core county function. So.
Yeah, I think it's um the the easy answer is, it's a combination of expertise, like if you look at the services that we are um requesting qualifications from, it's holding easements, it's holding endowments, it's putting together restoration plans. It's managing the land, so the reason that we're going for a request for qualifications is we expect there to be a lot of different firms out there, mostly nonprofit firms that
Want to firm with this multifaceted.
It's multifac, or a lot of different ones, like we, we are really fortunate, we've got a rich network of nonprofit firms that work in Thurston County on restoration-related um things, but they might not do all of this stuff. So there might be land trusts that hold easements, but they don't necessarily do rest- recovery restoration plans. And so this would be a way to collect information um from these qualified firms and have a list that we can reach out to now that we are expanding the portfolio.
How about the Conservation District?
That is one of the firms that
They might bid on it or something like that?
Conservation District, land trusts, there's nonprofit agencies.
Across the country, when other groups are doing this, how much does this cost roughly? Any idea?
It's, so there are a lot of calculations in the HCP, rough estimates, it really depends on what the land looks like now. Is it full of Scotch broom? Cause that's probably gonna be more expensive than something that's already more pristine prairie. So there's a range, and it's usually calculated on a per acre amount, and it's more expensive at the beginning as you're trying to restore it. And then as it gets restored, then those costs go down. But yeah, we can, we can share the tables, but it probably won't, won't be very helpful.
But all the costs of maintenance on all of these properties we envision meeting over the life of the HCP are factored into the credit costs.
Yeah, we're excited that we have a portfolio of lands that we need to get firms to help us manage.
We're still looking at purchasing more land too, so we're not done with that. Do we have like, like a list of desired, like, things, like, we need more frog land? We need more murallet land, or like, how does that, is that available anywhere?
Yep, in the HCP, there's a a table, um
A report that Josh produces?
There's the report on the permits and the report on lands acquired, and there's sort of targets for each one of the species.
Has a pocket gopher subspecies listed and how many acres we have in each category? And remember, Commissioner, what's the saying, there's really three yelm subspecies?
You know, they never did define that through DNA or anything, so I I've often questioned.
Somebody was taking fingernail polish and putting little spots on the gophers and releasing them in yelm.
Is it four thousand acres, pocket gopher?
Somewhere around. That we need?
Over thirty years.
So part of what the HCP looked at was the expected development trends in all the different service areas for all the species. And we also looked at, you know, what are, what are the needs of schools and fire districts and our Public Works Department and all of those things. We tried to forecast, you know, how much acreage are we gonna need in all these different areas? And then as we, as those build out, you know, they're not gonna build out the same rate. So we're just gonna be keeping an eye on those development trends to know where we need to be next in in purchasing property.
We only charge it that.
That's this team, that's this team. So that, all of that will stay with Thurston County, this is really just sort of the on-the-ground support of the management of these lands. Which is gonna change year to year depending on the state of the lands that get acquired.
Okay, any other questions for? Item six A is Emergency Services, Thurston Region Hazards Mitigation Plan, Ben Miller taught us here.
Yes, the um county uh is required um to have a hazard mitigation plan uh in order to receive federal funds for hazard mitigation. Uh this is the fourth edition of the Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan for the Thurston Region. Uh it is a multi-jurisdiction plan and was written in collaboration with all of the jurisdictions. The third edition was published, believe in twenty seventeen. So um this, it's time for an updated plan, basically. And Ben is here to answer any questions that you may have about it.
Any questions for Ben?
Are you gonna get into the differences between seventeen and today?
Well, those were brief. I'll just remind you that we did do a work session on January twenty-fourth where we did a half-an-hour presentation on some of those differences. This, keep in mind, with the hazard mitigation plan, it gives us a framework and a plan moving forward on how to mitigate ongoing issues within Thurston County. Some of those top-ranked initiatives for the next five-year planning cycle, which is, this plan is approved, should be approved on a five-year cycle. COVID got in the way of that plan, planning cycle as we move forward, so we're slightly delayed on that front. But with that, we're looking at structural ignition prevention within the wildland urban interface, public outreach strategies, community wildfire protection plans, extreme heat incident response and illness plans, and Olympia sea level rise response planning and implementation. And so those, those are just a few of the top initiatives that are included in the entire plan as a whole.
Sounds like we're good. Thank you, Ben. You got another item here, six B, procurement of Panasonic, Panasonic ToughMate G2 rugged didn't?
Ruggedized.
Ruggedized?
Eight.
That's not a word, come on. There's now ruggedized tablets and associated equipment.
So these tablets are loaded with software that allows our medic one first responders to document patient care in the field. This motion authorizes the purchase of a hundred and twenty-five tablets that will be deployed to medic one first responders, and they are being purchased off a Washington State master contract. So we followed all the procurement rules and are seeking board approval to make the purchase.
What may not be apparent on the agenda, that the total dollar amount of the acquisition would be six hundred and fifty-nine thousand, six hundred and forty-three dollars and six cents.
So that's.
Medic one funds.
That's medic one money. And the medic one board has already went over this, is that right, Ben?
Yes, this is in the unanimously approved EMS council budget for twenty-four, twenty-five.
I abstain. Okay, any questions on item six B? Hearing none. Thank you, Ben.
Thank you.
Seven A is public health and social services, request for proposals for public health and social services. That sounds like a weirdly named item.
Right, it's a little bit vague, but that is because every year, public health and social services issues RFPs somewhat in a bundle. They are prepared to issue requests for proposals for a variety of programs that are funded by public health and social services, including homeless services, affordable housing, projects under the Community Development Block Grant, and for the Veterans Emergency Shelter. There will be a bidders conference on February twenty-ninth, and proposals would be due to the county on April fifth of this year, and I see Tom on the screen. He can answer any questions that you may have.
Questions on the R P? Nope. Thanks, Tom. Let's move on to Public Works, eight A, interlocal agreement with City of Lacey for Pacific Avenue pavement preservation.
Our friends have joined us right on time.
Brian Meyer and Matt Unzelman from Public Works.
Yes, so the first item here is a collaborative project with the City of Lacey for pavement The, did you, looks like the City of Lacey, and the guys will correct me if I'm wrong here, the City of Lacey will pay one point three million dollars for their part of the project, and the project, I believe, for the county's share is fully funded by the National Highway Performance Program. And fill in any facts about it, or?
Yeah, good morning, Brian Meyer. So the actual total project's a hundred percent funded. We were awarded this grant from the National Highway System in 2021 prior to Lacey annexing their portion of Pacific Avenue from Carpenter Road to Kenwood. So as part of this, we continued with our design, since it's a hundred percent funding, working with Lacey on their section. This ILA basically says, the Lacey, any, any cost over the one point three-three million, City of Lacey will reimburse the county for those expenses. So including change orders or unforeseen things that aren't covered by the grants, the National Highway System grant. And the project is, we're doing kind of a mill and fill, which is grinding away the top three inches of asphalt and then repaving the surface. Along with it, we'll be redoing ADA, doing ADA improvements, so on ramps and driveways.
Just add on to what Brian said, the board, back in October, authorized us to call for seal bids, so this is probably gonna be the last time you hear from us until we're coming back to request to award the contract. And what Brian was talking about NHS funding, we just received another NHS grant on the Mud Bay Road Hill. So we're gonna be doing a mill and fill on Mud Bay Hill, all the way from down at the one-on-one interchange, all the way up to the signal at Mud Bay Delphi. So the NHS program's been good to the county lately.
Is that a, is that a particularly, uh, stretch of?
Just pavement condition. So one of the conditions of this grant is that it has to be on a route that's designated as part of the National Highway System, and that portion of Mud Bay Road is part of the National Highway, National Highway System, and that is currently our worst condition in terms of pavement conditions.
Tilly Road is one of those roads.
I wish that was on the NHS route.
Isn't it on that state highway?
No, Old Ninety-Nine down there is, but I wish it was, because Tilly could use some work.
When is this, so this project on Mud Bay Hill, what, when will that take?
We just got that, so I think, is it twenty-five?
Late twenty-two, twenty-five, going construction. Most of the work would happen in twenty-two, twenty-six. We haven't yet come to you to obligate the design funding. It won't be till probably this summer to obligate those funds to begin work on it.
So concurrently with this project, Brian's team will be working on the Yelm Highway NHS grant that goes in between Rich Road and Lacey City Limits, another well-needed project. So lots of mill and fills going.
What is the, the funding like? Is it mad? Do we have to, this one's right in my district, so I wanna make sure I have the details. So the, um, the grant, how much did we get from the, from the Mud Bay thing?
Oh, the Mud Bay?
It's so, somewhere, I believe it is around two and a half million. I will, I will follow up with you with an exact number. And then do we have to pay, like, a certain amount, or how does, what's this?
It was a hundred percent federally funded.
Oh, awesome. And when you say that, like, you're saying, like, they, I forget the verb used, grind down the top three inches of pavement?
Yeah.
Is that, like, is a machine that, that does that?
Yeah, so there's a, just a giant road grinding, asphalt grinding machine. They'll chew it up and they'll haul that away, and we come back in and just put new asphalt in, in that section.
What's nice is they can recycle those grindings, so they can include them in new asphalt at the asphalt plant, or often we can use them for road base, too.
And this is just a mill and fill, not an overlay?
Correct. Recycled asphalt, is that?
Mm-hmm.
Like, we were talking about that at Nusquali Valley, that.
Yeah, it's, you'll hear it called rap.
It's awesome.
And so the state has specs that require a minimum amount of recycled asphalt and new asphalt, so.
Good stuff. Okay, thanks, guys.
Yep.
All right, so we've got, next one is also you guys, Public Works, ordinance repealing Thurston County Code thirteen oh four relating to road districts.
So in state law, state law appears to provide that for roads, that there would be one district per commissioner unless the board specifies the number of road districts in the county. In nineteen sixty-nine, the county Board of County Commissioners established Thurston County Code thirteen oh four and specified two road districts. In updating county codes, found this code out there, and the Public Works Department is able to more efficiently manage the county road system with only one district. So they are asking the board to repeal the, the current Thurston County Code thirteen oh four, and instead identify one single district, road district, for the entire unincorporated area. Did I get that right? It sounds so weird.
One commissioner assigned to that district, or would we all be as a whole?
So this is a weird one, and we went down the rabbit hole on this one. So when we knew, when we knew there was gonna be five commissioners, we went through the, did a comprehensive review of the code to see, hey, what, what applicable codes needs to be changed to accommodate for five commissioners? Well, it turns out, at the time, we had three commissioners and two road districts, so it wasn't even matching up. So rather than having, and we only operate with, even though we say we have two, we're only currently operating with one road district.
What's the meaning of a road district? What do you mean by operating with one?
It's our, the limits of our transportation system, I guess, it, it's the county boundary minus the cities, is the way I understand it.
It's just, it's kind of an arcane way of organizing the delivery of that Public Works the Road program maintenance to the county. It, way, if you wanna go way back hundred-plus years, right, when commissioners were kind of road commissioners first, it made more sense, but it doesn't make sense anymore operationally, and so it's a vestige that really staff are recommending it be removed because that's not how we do business.
And it's, it's actually pre-statehood, is how they used to manage construction and maintenance activities for roads.
Interesting. Technical fix, sounds like.
It really is.
That's what it is.
Cleans up county code.
Questions from anybody else?
Okay.
Well, sounds straightforward. Thank you.
All right.
Okay, we'll have our standing items there, and that will bring to a close the February twentieth agenda. Next up on the morning work session is proclamations and awards. We've got a draft of the African American History Month proclamation, which is for next week, and commissioners have review, revisions, let staff know as soon as possible on that one. Anything else we need to address, Clark? Okay, then next up would be advisory boards and commissions. We've got a packet here.
[inaudible]
Okay, any questions or comments from board members on the proposed reappointments to Agri Tourism Advisory?
No.
Are we ready to approve these? Anyone need more time?
Thurston.
Antherston, yeah, Antherston. Certainly. I know Ms. Mackenzie Sullivan, she's solid.
Most folks know her. I think there's still some cleanup on this sheet that needs to occur, like the lodging, I think the lodging tax advisory one has been filled. I'm curious if the Ag Advisory Committee is still vacant, is there, where there, there might have been other ones that are on here that shouldn't be on here anymore, and then are there ones that should be on here that aren't on here anymore?
Yeah, I'm confirming this back.
Okay.
So we'll get some talk about that.
I think that I agree with, with Wayne that the, we, I thought we filled Ag Advisory Committee.
No, there is an opening. I saw that they were conducting interviews for an opening at the last agenda that the Ag Advisory sent out, so I figured there was an opening. I'm not just, I'm not sure on who left, though. Can you hear me all right?
Yep, yep, we can.
Okay.
Yeah, somebody must have left, because that was full a couple months ago, or, like in the fall, a few months ago, so, but there might have been some.
I think we hired that person to be our ag.
Ah, you're right.
So that, that created the vacancy.
I knew I knew that name. That's why I was like, yeah, okay, that makes sense. All right, well, then there's that, and Clark is gonna try to update this. These three appointments, Commissioner Mejia, Commissioner Klaus, does anyone have any need for more time, or do we wanna go ahead and make these appointments?
I don't need any more time.
There's three reappointments, I see, Tom.
I'm good.
Everybody's good? Okay, you put them on?
I'm good.
Okay? All right. Let's just extend that consent agenda a little further, get these done. Okay, that takes care of that one, then let's go to P I O checking. Any questions for Megan?
Yeah. Is it, my imagination, are we getting some echo feedback on, at a different level on some of these, and is it fixable?
I'm guessing.
Is that, is that near Baileywick?
I'm guessing it's a there-end issue, not an our-end issue.
Some are worse than others, I was wondering what to deal with.
That's why I'm guessing it's a there-end issue, because it's different for each person.
Because if we have people listening, you know, in the audience or something, I'm not sure they're gonna get it all. So is there no adjustments?
Not from our end. It's, it's their phone or their connection. So when Eric was speaking, I think it was his microphone that he was talking into. I don't, I don't believe it was ours, because it only was for his connection. Commissioner Mejia sounds much better this time, so she might be in the less echoey space.
Okay.
County-issued phones, let me tell you.
Okay, next up is Commissioner Items, five. One is Community Development Block Grant informational piece.
Commissioners, this is just an early heads-up related to the Community Development Block Grant, and if you have some technical questions, Tom is still online to answer those. But this is just a heads-up that the City of Lacey has a population now that qualifies them to be their own CDBG entitlement community. And so it brings us to a juncture. Every three years, if you recall, there is this kind of renewal of the, sort of the balance of that joint agreement for the administration of CDBG funds. They have an opportunity to decide whether or not they continue or go out on their own as an entitlement community, and so just wanted to give you a heads-up that those conversations are, will be occurring. In part, the next kind of decision point is with the City of Lacey. They need to decide whether or not they want to collaborate or kind of go with their own, and that would then drive some of the other conversations that staff will be having and likely electeds from the partnering jurisdictions would have, related to what are those agreements that will unfold? Do we continue the same process minus the City of Lacey? I think the biggest takeaway for us at this point in time was, talk about ruggedized, there's another term that's used in this document, is the preponderance test, and that, or, that's actually on the last page.
I know that word.
Okay. For, kudos to Alex first for pulling this together with kind of understanding all the various questions and then the decision points and creating the options. But what that means is that we are able to continue to maintain our status. It would potentially, if, if Lacey pulls out their funding, it would be a reduction in funding that we would have, but it means that we would still be able to administer the program. And so that's a good thing, otherwise. Otherwise, there could be a compromise uh to that such that we would end up having to potentially devolve uh to the the remainder of the state program. But Tom, please fill in any of the gaps and correct, correct my uh misstatements there.
You're doing great. Yeah, so without, the county would not have, meet the population threshold without Lacey. So we needed to pass this prepa- preponderance test in order to qualify to remain a CDBG entitlement community.
Would it or would not? We can.
Okay.
Yes. Which is a good thing. So it's, it's, this is just a heads up to know that likely, once Lacey has their internal conversation and comes to some conclusions, that will then start some dominoes falling into place for us to have with the other uh partner jurisdictions as well.
It would decrease the amount, but it would increase the frequency, right? Because you wouldn't be round robinning with four jurisdictions, you'd be ro- round robinning with three.
Possibly, yep.
Or it's right now we're round robbing with three and it would go down to two potentially.
Okay.
Between the South.
South County and Tumwater.
And Tumwater.
Ah, okay, yeah, yeah.
So, we don't need to decide anything right now or just?
No decision, this was just an early heads up because uh I think, Tom, our plan has to be updated by this, or agreement needs to be done by the end of June, early July timeframe. And so this could be a fairly accelerated conversation.
When does this, when does the next C V, CDBG uh round start and who's up? I mean, we're, we're up, right?
Uh this year is Tumwater.
Okay.
Um so this is the last year of the agreement, so Tumwater, we're putting out the RFP. Um and so this will be Tumwater's year and that, this is the last year of the agreement. So the agreement needs to be renegotiated this summer. Uh we notify communities in May likely um of this process coming up. They need to tell us by June, but then we need to have all the, the paperwork, the agreements, interlocal agreements and MOUs finalized by eight, by August. Uh but having a heads up on Lacey's decision will allow us, if there's, needs to be some adjustments to those agreements from previous years, allow us to do that.
Okay, any questions, Commissioners? More to come on this one. Alright, thank you.
Thanks, Tom.
Let's go to item two, building two and three repairs.
We have uh Jason Ash and Rick Thomas with us this morning um to talk about uh items that have come to light at courthouse that are not.
You guys again.
Our courthouse agreement. Yeah.
I was just saying.
You'll see him a few times. Go ahead, I'm gonna turn it over to you, Jason.
Good morning, I'm Jason Ash, Facilities Manager. So um as we know, the, all of our buildings, as you've mentioned earlier, have issues. Some that have recently came to light besides the FJC issue is the roof on building three. It is a, the report's attached. Rick and his team had the engineer do a assessment of it earlier or late last year. It's a torched down roof, I believe it's original to the building. Throughout my time here, we've had a few different leaks and we've always been able to repair them. We've gotten to the point now where vendors are not even willing to attempt to repair it. Uh there's a lot of, lot of damage, all of the all of the rocking on the shingles up there, or the asphalt shingles have gone away. It's well past its lifetime. So we, we are looking at needing to replace it.
Who's housed in there?
The sheriff and District Court.
Sheriff was just commenting it was leaking when he was in here yesterday, I think.
Blue tarps.
A- and that's what, that's probably our next option, is trying to put that on the roof until we can get it replaced. We do not have, so we do have money in building reserves to do the replacement of the flat roof sur- surface. That'll be around seven hundred thousand plus some PM costs, depending upon the bids we get. We just ask for rough cost at this time.
Yeah.
Uh, project management costs, sorry, sorry, soft cost permitting, Rick's staff's time and all of that.
So, so in total, it probably is about a million dollars.
And we can afford that in building reserves.
We will have enough moving forward with our building reserves by the time we do it to, a whole lot of building reserves for that. That will drain our building reserves though, um for building three. So if we had any further issues, we would have no, no funding source available.
Did we make a decision sometime back to go ahead with the remodel and disregard the roof? Did I?
The roof and HVAC are not part of the remodel.
But I remember something about a discussion, something like this, that we need a roof.
We talked about how this is why you have building reserves.
Yeah.
Uh and so was this the plan all along to do?
If something came up to tap into building reserves.
Not include it in the rebuild, right?
Yes, that has been the scope for quite some time now.
Lipstick for that big.
Right, right.
Just to give us a heads up on this.
Yes, informational.
Yeah.
Um this won't replace the whole roof, so like talking about the parapet walls, which are the wa- walls that border the whole building on the roof and the mancered roof, that, this replacement will not cover that cost. Um that's about a, what, additional million dollars to do all of that.
So, what's the other, what was going on in building two?
So the other issue that's arisen recently is there is a dry fire system that feeds some of that breezeway, the covered area between the buildings and all of the soffits in building two. A dry system works, just to cover briefly, is it's pressurized with air because the space is unconditioned, so that way it won't freeze. If there was water in the system, it would freeze when we get freezing conditions and we'd have bigger issues. So this works with air ma- being in the line. One, once the air drops below a certain pressure, like if there was an event, the sprinkler head still breaks, then water comes behind the air to put out the fire. So, there's a compressor that runs this system to keep the air at the maintained temperature. Or not temperature, pressure, excuse me. We've, we've had some repairs made, the system is original to the courthouse, there's fittings every ten feet in the line. They're, they're leaking. Out of forty hours, we put an hour meter on the compressor to see how often it was running. Out of forty hours, it ran twenty-six hours to maintain the air pressure.
Because of the leaks.
Because of the leaks.
And how often should it be running?
Should be running about four to six hours out of forty hours. Um we, we thought we found the main leak, we repaired that and that slowed it down a little bit. So we have leaks throughout the system. We also do have money in that building reserve that would, would uh cover that cost. But it will also deplete that building reserve.
How, how much of a cost is that?
I'm getting rough costs because they don't, they don't know because we haven't done design on it. It'll probably be around seven hundred and fifty thousand is what the vendors are saying.
And so that's gonna repair all the leaks and replace the compressor?
Yes, the compressor is, should be the cost.
Replacing all, all the piping and repairing the leaks.
Yes.
Those, every ten feet or?
Yes.
Is that like one inch pipe or something?
It, it varies from three inch all the way down.
Steel.
With, with regards to that roof, that, I mean, this is why, flat, I mean, you know, flat roofs in Washington are bad. And then flat roofs surrounded by uh
Trees.
Trees, they shed, absolutely destroy. So you'll end up, you know, like we were talking about trees in there earlier. When the, the trees are in there and they're shedding and they're blocking drains and it, it makes water build up and standing water is bad. So like, you know, we talked about trees on that, on that campus. Uh when they're next to buildings, they ruin buildings. So it's something to keep in mind as we move forward. Has that?
Yeah, no, your point on, we do try to clean the roof. We actually have a PM now, we have someone up there every two weeks.
I don't think there should be standing on this, so.
It might fall through and break their leg.
There, there's been no structural
Okay.
Concerns with it.
You used the word soffits, what is that?
That is the outside of the building, if you look up at the eaves of the wall, or the eaves of the ceiling. If you were to look at the exterior of the buildings and look up, you'll see soffits.
And the parapets are the wraparound on the, the roof that, so like if you look how there's a wall looking on the roof?
Yeah.
The parapet is the thing that's attached to the roof, that guy, it's, it's a decorative deal.
But what kind of a requirement is in place? I take it this is a sprinkler system?
Yes.
And so, is it required that they be?
The soffits are under.
Metal pipe, galvanized pipe, can it be the new white uh stuff that sticks together, what is that?
On, on your house, you'll hear about it.
There have made changes now.
So what would it be changed to?
Birds living in them and.
Most cost effective would be just to replace the fittings at each interval.
And are those fittings where the sprinkler itself?
No.
Is working or?
It's where each pipe, it's where each pipe connects to the next pipe.
And it's just repairs over the years probably or?
Yeah, it's forty, what, forty-two years old or? So the pipe's in good, good condition. We, we have mu- very few issues with the pipe itself, it's just the, the fittings that bind them together.
Are they couplers, is that, is, is it a coupler at each location?
That's a fitting essentially, I think that's what you're thinking of.
Yes, it is. Gasket, and their gasket, have gaskets in them, so the gaskets have dried out over time and whatnot.
Is that something that you can replace the gaskets and use the same coupler?
Mo- most of the time when they do it, they do it as one piece, just because things have worn and whatnot. So m- most vendors we deal with will not do just the gasket, they wanna do the whole fitting.
Staff can't do that whole thing on the, to get by, because we're gonna be in a situation now where we're gonna put some more lipstick on this thing. Is it gonna be usable all through and after the remodel?
It should be, yes, if we make these repairs, it should be, or it will be functional, sorry, I shouldn't say should.
Not just for the seven years, but like Commissioner Mensor said, it might go longer.
Yes.
Building's gonna have to collapse for the public to be willing to raise their property tax to build a new building, so.
I will add staff, we cannot make these uh, these repairs, we don't have the certification. No one on staff does, they, they need to be NICE app certified, so we cannot have my staff do it.
Fire code thing. You don't do it right, insurance doesn't pay or whatever.
Okay, so more to come on these, when the guys got more information, they'll bring it to you.
Thank you.
Um and then the next, they're not going anywhere because the next item is dangerous trees.
Commissioner Edwards' favorite topic.
It is.
And no, you can't go cut them down yourself.
So I have actually, since I spoke with Robyn last, I have actually received another complaint. So we have a total of six issues currently. Four of them are trees on tax title properties. Three of the trees need to be removed. I've gotten rough cost estimates back, we're waiting on finalized ones. All the trees, the assessments came back, I actually just received them this morning. So they're dead, they're, they need to be removed. They are around five to seven thousand dollars each to have the tree removed.
How much?
Five to seven thousand.
Big trees?
Yes, yes.
The last time we did this, we had a forty-two thousand dollar bill, I don't remember how many there were, but.
Something like big cottonwoods, they're dangerous paths in the neck, yeah.
There was, I believe that was eight trees we had removed. But there, the fourth tree is actually, the trees are living, but they're, they're about a hundred foot tall fir trees. The limbs have died, the lower limbs, and they're falling down on a adjacent property owner's property. He's concerned, it's already hit his fence, he has asked if we will replace his fence. And he is, also has concerns of them falling on his carport and whatnot, that's about ten to fifteen feet away. The cost estimate on that, we would need to have all those trees limbed. The, the assessment came back, there's no danger of them falling, but like I said, the lower limbs are dead and need to be removed. That came back at eighty, around eighty-five hundred was his cost estimate to come out and I believe there's a total of seven trees there.
How do we put out contracts like that?
We, I go off the small works roster.
Okay.
As long as it's under ten thousand. I can go to one vendor, we, there's a few vendors we work with unfortunately, excuse me, on a regular basis with this. So I reach out to different ones on that. Um if it goes above ten thousand, then I ask for multiple bids from all of them.
How do I find the small works roster?
Um it is on, the MRSC roster, if you just Google it.
That's where we, okay.
So those are the trees?
So the trees, the fifth one is that I was just recently brought to my attention. And we're trying to work with the city of Olympia and we've gotten no responses. There's a tax title property out by the Olympia High School where the brush is growing into the roadway. The, the local residents there have made complaints that people hide in the brush and I guess there was actually one person that was attacked. So they've asked that the county take responsibility for removing that brush. That will be, the cost estimate I got back was around twenty-five hundred. That would be to have someone come in, cut all the brush back and spray it so that we don't have this issue again.
This is, and this is our responsibility because?
Tax title.
Tax title.
That's creating a danger.
And we handle those even with.
General fund. Right, which is why the guys come to you, is we need your authority to pay for these things out of the general fund.
Um the last one is.
National Public Health, it sounds like.
Making our roads safer.
The last one is there's a, in a residential neighborhood, again, there's a development, there's a tax title property that contains a septic tank on it. We have to do a yearly, there's a operating certificate we have to do with public health, so we have to have it inspected yearly. There is a leak in it. So there's a crack in the tank.
Who's, who's septic system?
It's on the tax title.
I know, but who's putting stuff in it?
No one.
Then why don't we just fill it in?
Maybe that's what they're asking.
Dig it out.
So, I, I'm not a septic expert, that's something we could look into. Um I think the cheapest fix would be to have that pack or that repair made, the septic company got back, that is only, only I say, but that's fifteen hundred to two thousand dollars to have them go in.
I guess I'm curious, it's a septic tank?
Yes.
Okay, and fluid is going into the tank?
No, there is no fluid currently going into it.
It's just.
Why would we fix it if it's not gonna be used?
Because we have to have it, per public health, it has to be functioning.
Why, it's not being used?
Yeah, I can look further into that.
Yeah, that doesn't sound right. Where's that at?
Um I can get you the address also.
We're going to sell that property, right?
It's tax title.
Tax title, so.
Only if someone offers to buy it.
What's on the property, just the septic tank?
Just the septic tank.
There's no house or anything?
No house.
And nothing in the tank? Patchit, empty tank, it's never gonna be used.
Is it cheaper just digging out of the ground and call it a day?
Um I didn't ask for cost estimates on that.
That's something we could do, right? Uh Public Works or something like that could do it?
No.
No.
Not, not without paying. And I, I don't know that they repair septic tanks.
No, I'm saying just dig it out of the ground, put it in a dump truck, take it out to the edge of town.
We would, we would have to reimburse Public Works because they could not pay for that out of the road fund or other funds that they.
There's a process you have to go through when you decommission a septic.
I know, but why fix, I guess I'm, I, I'm curious, why would you fix something you're not gonna use?
Well, we're required to have an operating certificate that shows that there is no issues with the septic.
Says you have to have that?
Public health.
Well, they hell with public health. They don't have any authority over that, they got citizens out there that are having their septic go right on the ground that they don't even go out and enforce that.
Is this in one of the protected areas?
Yeah.
This is in one of the protected areas, that's why.
And there shouldn't be a septic tank there.
It's empty. It's empty, it's, no, this is too stupid, I can't go along with stupid all the time, this is one of those that I'm afraid.
I got more.
I will get more information and I will find out about decommissioning it and what that takes.
So we're going to go ahead with the, removing the dangerous trees and the limbs and what was the other item?
Brush.
And the brush, yep, and we'll get you more information on the thing.
Tried, last time we tried every way possible to avoid paying for this, and my spirit was crushed, so.
At least they all came in at once this time.
Thank you for all the hard work that you do.
Thanks guys, thank you.
I'm assuming item four is not needed?
Uh, item four is not needed, that is correct.
Okay, we have an executive session, but we also have this item that was handed to me, do we have to deal with this?
We're gonna have to figure it out, uh, that is the uh temporary.
Appointment for a legislator?
A legislator who's going on active duty.
What, what is it to figure out?
It looks like the, we just need to adopt a resolution. And every county needs to do their own resolution.
Seems that way.
Yeah.
I think it would, I probably would be hubris to do a make contact, maybe with each of the clerks of the board in those respective counties, just to make sure that everyone is. Uh, doing the same resolution with the same appointee, um, I think that could be interesting.
So what happens if we all appoint a different person?
We just sign it, why don't, uh, he just asked it to be signed by the Board of County Commissioners and sent back in.
Have to adopt a resolution. You do have to adopt a resolution.
So if if it's okay with the commissioners, we'll do a little bit more um homework on that, uh, just to make sure that we're doing the same as all the other jurisdictions, and then um potentially have it available for uh action next Tuesday.
Didn't even know we had.
Tuesday, yeah.
District in our county, it's just a little bit or something, I mean, it just, I don't know if anybody even lives in that part of the county.
Is it like down in Independence Valley or something?
Yes, I don't, I wasn't familiar with it when I heard about it, so.
Alright, so more to come, we don't, okay, well then let's go to the executive session. Uh, pursuant to RCW forty two thirty one ten one G.
Maria is here, pardon me.
To evaluate the qualifications of an applicant for public employment or to review the performance of a public employee. This is the annual performance review of the Assistant County, the interim county manager.
Yeah, I am interim at the moment, but this is my underlying performance as assistant.
Approximately twenty minutes, commissioner's action may follow, uh, we have Page R Director Maria Ponte with us, and Maria, what is, what needs to happen, is Robin leave or?
We can have a discussion and then we can bring her back and then invite her to be back.
And everyone else then needs to leave except the board members and yourself, okay? Okay, we are back for our agenda setting for February thirteenth, it is eleven oh six AM, we've completed the executive session. Um, direction was given to the, um, Human Resources Director, but no formal action of the board is following the executive session, that comes to the end. We're not gonna have, have time for any commissioner items, we're bringing this agenda setting meeting to a close, we're adjourned. And we're gonna pick straight away, do we have to stop and do a new Zoom?
Yeah, let's stop.
Okay, so, we're done. Give us a minute to fire up the...